You're watching Rogers TV.
First, I would like to thank Rogers Cable for this opportunity. My name is Laurie Baldwin Sands and I am running for a position on City Council on October 22nd in the 2018 Civic Election. I'm a lifelong resident of the City of St. Thomas. I am the proud mother of three beautiful daughters, Catherine, Amy, and Meg Sloan. My husband is Doug Sands and my son-in-law is Mitchell Highway. As a lifelong member of the City of St. Thomas, I have owned businesses and operated them within the city. And I'm very proud to say that each one has been sold as an ongoing operation for the last 38 years. Recently, I have just completed my mini Masters from Shulock School of Business at York University. And from 2006 until 2014, I was on your City Council, first representing social services from 2006 until 2010, and then from 2010 to 2014 as the Chair of Finance and Administration. I hope to return to City Council. And what my hope is, is to find out what matters most to the citizens of the City of St. Thomas. Things have been changing, things have been growing, and I want to know what is important to the citizens before going back to City Council. Recently, I have been a volunteer with many different agencies within the community, most notably with the Cancer Society. I developed the Calamity City Walk for the Elgin County Railway Museum. I'm a volunteer and a member of the University Women's Club, local Elgin chapter, and I hope to continue in that volunteer capacity. I am dedicated, I am independent in my thoughts, and I am very hardworking to make sure things get done. I have a very strong back-to-business attitude, and I'm very proud of the work that I have done in the past for the Horton Farmers Market in my term on that, and also for the St. Thomas Elgin Public Library, which is what we're in right now, and the revitalization project that happened here in this space. I hope to continue to do those things and continue to knock on the doors every day to find out again what matters most to the citizens of this community and make sure that we move forward in a positive way for the future for all of us. Thank you so much for your time. October 22nd, Laurie Baldwin Sands for St. Thomas City Council.
Hi, I'm Lesley Buchanan, and I'm participating in the 2018 municipal election for the City of St. Thomas City Council. I have been asked many times why I've chose to run and put my name forward for City Council. I'm a Montreal Canadiens fan, laugh if you want to. I sit back year after year and coach my team from the comfort of my couch, and I wonder why the players and the coaches missed this play or made that call. It is easy to criticize from the comfort of your couch, but not so easy to put yourself out there and to be the one to make the tough calls. I live here in St. Thomas, my children, my grandchildren, and my parents live here. I want this community to be the absolute best for them, so it is time for me to stop coaching from the couch and to put myself out there as someone who can make the tough calls. I bring financial and business management experience and interpersonal skills to the table. More importantly, I'm thoughtful, introspective, and I analyze and sometimes overanalyze everyone and people's motives as well. I'm forthright and honest. I'm not afraid to speak my mind. I believe that St. Thomas is a cyclical town, and at the moment, we have an aging population, but that will change. I work at the cemetery, many people are dying to get in there. But more importantly, to care for the aging, we need the young, so naturally, one follows the other. We have seen much growth in St. Thomas in the building industry for residential homes and the new entrance to the city, Dalewood getting a new bridge, and so it's so important that we must continue with this positive growth. My election platform is to make no promises that I cannot keep. So on that note, my only promise is to be the best I can for the City of St. Thomas.
Hi, my name's Gary Clark, and I'm seeking reelection on the St. Thomas City Council. I thank you for your past support and confidence that showed in me four years ago as I ran for the first time, and we've been able to get a lot of great things done to make St. Thomas a great place to live, work, and play. I've been born and raised in St. Thomas, the son of Martell and Frank Clark. I'm married to the former Elaine Barnier, and we have three adult children, Devon, Lindsay, and Matthew, and four grandchildren, Alexa, Jalen, Wesley, and Landon. I was a former teacher, principal, and superintendent. I've been active in the community all my life through minor sports when the kids were growing up, as well as sitting on the board for the Association for Community Living, now Community Living Elgin. Been involved with St. Thomas Sports Spectacular for a number of years. I currently coach the St. Thomas Special Olympics basketball team. I've been involved with the St. Anne's Community Festival, as well as being on the -- a member of the Optimists Club. Besides sitting on the boards, the weekly meetings that we have, we sit on a number of boards, and so I've been involved with the St. Thomas Elgin Planning Board, the Airport Board, involved with the St. Thomas Cemetery Board, Coalition Against Poverty, as well as the St. Thomas Senior Center. We've been proud of the work that we've been able to accomplish in the city, if you look at the police station being built, the sewage treatment plant updates, we've been able to get the recycling done, we've got the West End Campus with affordable housing and office and daycare in there, a number of projects where we've been able to renew Talbot Street and Dalewood Bridge. So we want to continue those things in the next four years. Infrastructure renewal is going to be very important, as well as economic development, where we help industries grow and increase production, so that it means more jobs. We're looking at partnerships with our different cultural projects in town, as well as the arts and our railroad heritage. We also want to see that we can come up with an affordable housing plan over the next four years. And of course, taxes need to be in a reasonable rate. People want services, they expect services, but they really want to see that they're within their budget and that we can accomplish these types of things and renew the city and make it an interesting place to live, work, and play, but that the taxes stay at a rate where it's near inflation or below inflation. I thank you for your past support, and I look forward to October 22nd when I can renew my efforts on your behalf. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Rose Gibson, and I'm running for this year's 2018 municipal election for City Council. I hope this time, a lot more people will be out to vote and be well-informed on who they're voting. The best opportunity to learn this is to visit videos such as this and other website pages and their Facebook pages. It's a great time with the social media that we have today to learn even more about who's running and why. Under my campaign platform, my biggest issue is the bus transportation, the affordable housing, and keeping our tax -- city property taxes at a low base as much as possible with the best quality of service and work, of course. The city here today, it will be growing. We expect a big expansion in the next 10 years, and I don't feel we're ready, so the preparedness that we need to do, need to look at between now and the next 10 years. Though term is only four years and there's a second term, it still needs to be patched in as on-working projects on all areas that is really needed for the City of St. Thomas. Today, I wish that we could say we have adequate service back in 2000 -- for adequate service for the bus transportation that we have. The last time there was a report in was given to City Council in 2008. Some of these strategies were done and taken over, especially in the capital area, but I feel that we need now to look at the service that we have today and let's see where we can tweak it up and do new routes, expand, maybe even do a timeline difference instead of the every 15 minutes, do it every half hour. The tax base here, I feel we haven't been too over-aggressive in it, which I do appreciate, and I do feel that some of the quality of services we're getting has really improved in the last two years in regards to our tax base. The growing urban areas that we have today have excelled quite a bit. However, we really need to look at buying or looking at areas for manufacturing. When large companies look at us, we have small manufacturing areas. We need to look at maybe having a larger space for some of these bigger expansions to come in on certain businesses that are looking to expand. I'm not saying we look at one particular, oh, this is to be the almighty god for money and for people to have a good living experience here at St. Thomas, but I do believe that we really need to look at that. So I'm hoping October 22nd, you will really think about coming out and voting, and most importantly, hopefully, you will take a look at what I'm standing for and consider voting for my -- for me as well on October 22nd. So please be informed, ask the questions, and be there. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Greg Graham, and I'm running for the position of City Council in the next municipal election, October 22nd. A bit about myself, I was born and raised in St. Thomas. I went to school here, attended Western, lived at home while I did so, moved away to the University of Toronto when I completed my master's degree, and then work brought me back here in 2000, and I've been a resident here in St. Thomas ever since. I live here with my wife Tina and our three children, and I believe that St. Thomas is a great place to live and work. My career has spanned various roles in finance, starting with TD Canada Trust, moving into London Health Sciences, and then I'm currently Chief Financial Officer at Chippewa, the Thames First Nation. As councillor, I would seek to pursue three priorities that I have, first of which is economic development. I believe that St. Thomas has experienced a tremendous amount of growth over the last several years, and job creation, I believe, needs to accompany that growth so that people that live in St. Thomas have the opportunity to work in St. Thomas as well in meaningful careers and careers in which they wish to pursue. My second priority is the problem of addictions and drugs in the community. St. Thomas is not alone in this. A number of communities throughout Canada have been hit particularly hard with the opioid crisis, and I believe that a comprehensive drug and addiction strategy needs to be developed by the city in which would address such issues as what I just mentioned, but also encompass the cannabis availability. My third area of priority is with programming for youth and seniors. A lot of great work has been started in this area, and I point to such things as the skate park that has opened up off of Talbot Street in St. Thomas, and also Elevated Park at the west end of the city. I believe that more is possible, and with -- as a councillor, I would pursue those activities that would support youth and seniors in the community. In closing, I look forward to your support on October 22nd. I would very much appreciate the opportunity of being a council member for City of St. Thomas, and I look forward to October 22nd. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name's Timothy Haddon, and I'm running for St. Thomas City Council. I grew up here, I was born and raised. I was involved as a volunteer here from a very early age as a member of St. Thomas React. I also have put in countless hours with the Elgin Theatre Guild. Professionally, I've worked as a small business advisor, so I have seen firsthand the struggles that small businesses go through, both in starting up and in their operation, so I feel I'm uniquely qualified to help in that regard. I also want to see greater respect towards the arts, culture, and heritage scene in St. Thomas. So in terms of supporting things like the Elevated Park, the St. Thomas, the Art Gallery, the Talbot Teen Center, and places like that, they recently had their funding cut, and I'm looking to try and reinstate that as a member of council. From my background as a tax preparer, I've also seen how taxes in a cumulative way, both through federal, provincial, and then municipal taxes, can be a burden on families. So I'm making it a priority of mine to limit increases to property tax as much as possible. I won't lie to you and tell you that will cut property tax, because in the 10- to 20-year history that I looked up, that's not something that occurs very often, and the city only has one way to raise those funds, so that'll be a priority for me as well. I'm asking for your vote on October 22nd so that I can be your voice for City Council. I will listen to you, I will respect your views, and I will tell you mine. You will know that they were -- I came to that opinion through a lot of research and study, and if I don't know the answer when you ask me a question, I'll look it up and get back to you. So again, on October 22nd, vote Tim, and thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Jim Herbert. I'm very excited to have the opportunity to submit my name for a position on City Council as councillor. I understand it's a four-year commitment, and if elected, I'm prepared to honor that commitment. I did manage the X-ray department in St. Thomas for 15 years and managed the radiology department in Stathroy at both hospitals, responsible for multimillion-dollar budget, which included operating and capital and financial statements. I'm a past president of the St. Thomas Curran Club and YMCA in St. Thomas, on the STI and AGI boards at St. Thomas Inc., plus I was on the advisory board at Fanchow College. So my plan was, I need to speak to the people to find out just what the needs of City Council were and who to support. So I started with Chris Harris, Chief of Police. I suggested a satellite station downtown, pleased to meet face-to-face with youth who struggle with substance addiction, and he was concerned that the new cannabis laws are coming effect in the middle of October. His officers are only going to be half-trained because they need the second part in Florida. I spoke to Bob Davis, the new fire chief. He has long-term visions, and he agreed that they would like up-to-date equipment when fighting fires. I tried to address the downtown's issues. I told there was a drugs problem on the street and young people asking for handouts, and many merchants felt this kept potential customers' way. Judith Wiley, CEO of Central Community Health, her concerns are we need a safe injection site plus an Elgin County strategy. We need to encourage industry to come to St. Thomas, create jobs, promote a strong economy. How do we do that? We support the St. Thomas Economic Corporation. Plus, if you didn't know, that an industrial property in London is assessed at $2 million will pay $73,000 in taxes per year in St. Thomas, and in St. Thomas, you'd pay $101,000 in taxes, a difference of 27. Where would you build? Sandy Westenway, she organizes in, out of the cold, Young United Church, Grace United Church, 198 people starting in November. Homeless people need a place to go, we need to support that. Laura Wormke, Executive Director, Archery Hall, her main concern is she'd love the city to stabilize their funding. I support a town hall meeting where in key issues I question by the community. Let's take a step back, get more answers before we make decisions on council. Borg Culture encourages effective discussion and constructive decision-making. We need to work together as a team. The new CEO, the Elgin General, Robert Byron, his -- one of his visions is to bring MRI technology to St. Thomas. I'm totally on board with that, managing there for years, it's one of the tools that we really need. I've spoken to many citizens who are concerned about the air quality in Sunset Drive neighborhood. Responses from the city have been negative, like to find out if really nothing can be done. I've been a volunteer many times in our community. One of my favorites is the Special Olympics basketball tournament is held each year. My plan now is to continue visiting other business members of our community to find out just how City Council can help if elected. I think there's a need for palliative care, high-quality palliative care, and I'm going to investigate that. In closing, I bring, if elected, I bring a new face to the council, which means new ideas and a different things -- a different look at things to the table. Thank you very much, I appreciate your support on October 22nd.
Hi, my name's Patricia Hunter, and I'm running for City Council in the City of St. Thomas. I really believe that in a community, you should immerse yourself and be really involved, and that's exactly what I've been doing. I've been an active member of the Elgin Businesswomen's Network Administration Team for the past five years. I have revitalized a community garden and supported them with receiving grants and getting the garden off the ground. And I've been the coordinator for the Fresh Fest Committee and by extension, a director of the Iron Horse Festival. With all of these things under my belt, I thought it would be very fitting to run for City Council, and that was supported with the professional work that I do. I work for a community capacity-building project that helps support newcomers, but also looks at building welcoming, caring, and inclusive communities, and all of our work definitely goes into doing that and bettering St. Thomas. I've also been a researcher for the Living Wage the past three calculations, and it's a very important advocacy tool for our community to help support those that are most in need. These two activities, my professional career and my volunteerism, all have led me to believe that I could definitely provide a new voice to City Council, one that is often omitted depending on who's sitting around the table. Things that I believe in that our community needs to look at, we need to look at the housing in our community. We have the in, out of the cold that exists in the winter months, but nothing to support this community when the weather's warmer. We also need to look at our stock of rental units, especially at the lower-end scale. We don't have very many options for people who are looking for affordable housing unless they do get into the Ontario Work System and the Housing System. We also need to look at looking at our community assets, people that have been receiving grants for decades, for years, and who have to continue to get grants opportunities instead of the city putting them onto a budget line. We need to make that commitment to our city so that they can be sustainable and look back at our work. The promises that I do make are in the way that I do my work. I believe in data. I have a background in statistics, I have a background in engineering, so I'm very confident with math. I'm not scared of numbers, I'm not scared of figures, and I think we can use that information that is available in many reports to inform our decisions. I also believe that lived experience is a very important aspect to look at. I'm not an expert in every subject, but I know that we have people who in our community who have lived it, who know the right answers, and I'm not afraid to ask and have conversations. And finally, I think that we need to look at sustainability, and we need to look at not what we're -- not where we're impacting today, but also where we're impacting for generations to come. We have to consider that we are not the only people who will be using these resources. We're not the only people who are using this community. We have to look at our children, the grandchildren, and the people after that. So again, my name is Patricia Hunter, and I'm running for City Council for St. Thomas.
My name is John Leaverty, and I'm a candidate for councillor for the City of St. Thomas in the 2018 municipal election. I have 33 years' experience in public education as a teacher, consultant, principal, and superintendent. I have served as the CEO of St. Thomas Energy and Chair of the Board for Ascent Group Inc. for the City of St. Thomas. I was previously elected as a Public Utilities Commissioner and Chair of the PUC for the City of St. Thomas. I currently serve as an elected director for the Elgin Middlesex Soccer Association, representing 15,000 players, coaches, club and match officials in the southwest region of the province, and I also currently serve as the Vice President of the Elgin Division of the Retired Teachers Association of Ontario. I've been heavily involved in the St. Thomas community for the past 30-plus years, serving on many local boards of directors, including St. Thomas Energy and Ascent Group of Companies, United Way of Elgin, St. Thomas Soccer Club, Fanchow College Board of Governors, Kettle Creek Conservation Authority, and the Retired Teachers Association of Ontario. I'm an active listener and team builder who empowers people to put their skills to work and learn new skills. I'm a coalition builder who is able to bring together people from different backgrounds, ages, and viewpoints and get them working together towards a common goal. I'm experienced at running meetings and keep people on task and on time. I'm a strong communicator with experience in dealing with the media. I have an excellent knowledge of the role of a councillor and how to be an effective council member. As a City councillor, I will draw on my many years of community involvement and leadership experience to help set the direction our community needs. As St. Thomas continues to grow, there needs to be a focus on job creation, jobs which offer good pay, good benefits, and security to our residents. As we grow, we need to provide more and different types of affordable housing to our residents. This will require a creative and unique approach from our City Council to how we use the existing lands within the city limits. Growth also brings with it challenges as we need to face together. I have always lived and worked by the adage of "together we're better." What this looks like is a focus on bringing more and diverse groups together to address the issues of infrastructure development, new recreation facilities, poverty, mental health, community involvement, and aging communities. Our City Council needs to involve a myriad of partners, including our partners in the federal and provincial governments, Central Elgin, and other surrounding municipalities. A major part of "together we better" requires improved levels of communication from City Council and seeking input on major challenges facing our city. All of this needs to happen while we respect the fact that a number of city taxpayers live on fixed incomes. With more people involved, it can be done. I am willing and prepared to use my experience and expertise to meet this agenda. Together, we can create the future St. Thomas that we can believe in and are proud to call our home. Together, we truly are better. On October 22nd, vote John Leaverty, councillor for the City of St. Thomas.
Hi, I'm Serge Lavoie, and I'm a candidate for St. Thomas City Council. I'm retired now after a 45-year career in communications and issues of management. Since being retired, I've become really involved in our community. I've been Chair of the Municipal Heritage Committee, the Horton Farmers Market Board of Management, the United Way, Community Improvement Program Committee, and the Railworks Coalition, which is the group that coordinates the activities of the KESO Station, the Elgin County Railway Museum, and On Track St. Thomas. You may know me best as the person behind the St. Thomas Elevated Park project. I've been working on that project for eight years now. It's a success story because not one dollar of government assistance has gone into that project. It's all been done by the community working together, and I believe that's a big part of the St. Thomas success story. We've done well in this community by investing in it over the last eight years. I'm going into the campaign with a few basic principles. First, growth promotes prosperity. You get growth by investing in your community. That gives us the money we need for roads, sewers, community recreational facilities, a variety of things that we find important and that attract other people to our community. Everybody in our community needs to share in the success, young, old, families, the disadvantaged. When they all succeed, we succeed as a community. You don't -- you don't actually cut your way to prosperity. I don't believe in cutting budgets for the sake of cutting budgets. Prosperity comes when you invest wisely, getting best value for money, but you invest. And finally, no municipality can do these things alone. I believe in partnerships between community groups of all kinds and the municipality. It's actually what has made St. Thomas a success story it is today. So many of the good things we take for granted were done by community groups in this city. I think I have the energy, the skills, the experience to help St. Thomas continue through to its next stage, more prosperity, more growth. That's why I'm asking for your support on October 22nd. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Michael Mennery. I'm running for council for the City of St. Thomas. I've been a lifelong resident pretty well of St. Thomas. I've been here since 1976 with my wife Corinne. I've been married for 45 years. I have two children, Michael Joseph and Stephanie Lynn, two grandchildren, Callie and Bradley. Hobbies that I like and enjoy doing is fishing, hunting, watching my grandson play hockey. He's a very good hockey activist. And as a candidate for the Council of the City of St. Thomas, I will not make any promises, but what I will do, I will listen to people's concerns and ideas and bring them forward. We're going to have a crisis, I think, sometime over the next couple of years. As interest rates go up, there's going to be more people in poverty, some well-off families that are going to be in dire straits, the food bank's going to need a lot more help. We have people on the streets, children, adults, everybody, and they are a part of our community, so I feel it's a concern that we need to look after by working with social clubs and churches and federal and provincial governments, as well as municipality and businesses, to find solutions to look after them, because we need to support and look after these people. One of my big concerns is looking after trying to get One of my big concerns is looking after trying to get this council, the city of St. Thomas, back to the ratepayers of St. Thomas. It seems like everything is being done behind closed doors. They're just bringing out items to vote on in public and there's no conversation as to what's going on. I know there are some matters that have to be dealt with behind closed doors, but those that don't have to be, should be out in the public so the public can see what's going on, you know, and have a say in it and hear what each councillor has to say about it. You know, and right now, there's not much of a discussion. There hasn't been with this past council and when they got elected, most of them, I believe, said that they would be transparent. And that's not what, isn't what's happening. Our seniors are going to be into dire straits too, some of them. Some are well-off, some are not. But as rates go up, their prices go up, food goes up, everything goes up, and there's going to be a need to look after them, you know. And I know we can't do everything for everybody, but we need to do what we can. And, you know, like, we have to work with, like I said, with church groups, service clubs, federal, provincial governments, municipalities, businesses, so we can bring all this together and work together as a group to bring a little harmony to the citizens of St. Thomas.
My name is Dave Mathers. I'm running for city council, city of St. Thomas. I was born and raised in St. Thomas, educated at Wellington Street School, Myrtle Street School, St. Thomas Collegiate Institute, and the University of Western Ontario. I'm a businessman, having owned businesses. I owned a car dealership in London, Motion Lincoln Mercury, and I owned St. Thomas Dragway in Sparta. My goals, if I'm elected to city council, will be to try to get a hotel for St. Thomas. We have beautiful facilities now. We have two arenas for hockey tournaments. We've got two regulation baseball diamonds for baseball tournaments. We've got a wonderful soccer pitch out on Verwell Road, 36 different fields out there. The problem is, we have tournaments, there's no place in St. Thomas that can accommodate all those people. Now, I realize some of the thinking is that, oh, they'll only be occupied Friday and Saturday if we do erect a hotel, but I disagree with that. I feel that businesses are looking to bring their executives here and they'd like a nice place to stay. The second thing I'd like to do is expedite the traffic controls in the city of St. Thomas. They haven't been looked at for over 10 years and there are problems that can be easily rectified. The third thing I want to do is to get the dog pound up to date. It's a disgrace if you're to walk into the dog pound. You wouldn't believe that the city has something this dirty and filthy. And there is a way to finance it. I'm told that there are very, very few dog licenses issued in St. Thomas. So if we had dog licenses sold, that would help pay for any renovations needed for the dog pound. Fourth thing I'd like to do is make abundantly sure that we focus on heritage buildings in the city and wherever possible, restore them to their original glory. The fifth thing is, I want to make more housing available. And one of those housing opportunities is the proposal at Alma College, the three buildings that the developer wants to put in there. I think this is a wonderful idea for the city of St. Thomas. We advertise that St. Thomas is 25% cheaper than London, but I believe it's also 25% smarter than London. We've got people moving in from the GTA area because of the homes and the prices here in town, so I would like to count on your vote for St. Thomas City Council. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Steve Peters. I bring experience, vision, and passion to the job. I'm seeking a seat on St. Thomas City Council and on October 22nd, I would really appreciate your support. I'm born and raised in St. Thomas, the son of Joan and the late Percy Peters. I was educated here in St. Thomas and Western University. I have a long interest in the heritage of our community, of trying to make sure that we preserve the past for future generations. I served on St. Thomas City Council from 1988 to 1991 as an alderman, as the mayor of St. Thomas from 1991 until 1999. Was elected as the MPP for Elgin Middlesex London in 1999 and served as the MPP from 1999 until 2011. I served as the Minister of Agriculture and Food, Minister of Labor. In my last four years at the legislature, I served as the Speaker of the Legislature. It was a tremendous opportunity that gave me a much better understanding of issues not only that we face locally, but how St. Thomas fits into a broader picture. I'm a proud downtown resident of St. Thomas. I've lived in the downtown core of St. Thomas for 26 years. This is a community that I really believe in and I want to be a part of to help make better going forward. Quality of life is extremely important to me. Quality of life encompasses a wide variety of issues, whether it's economic development of trying to bring new jobs and development into our community. It's about supporting culture and arts and heritage and recognizing that they are recreational opportunities for our young people and all citizens as well, too. I'm concerned about small, little issues, that we need to be more proactive as a community in dealing with keeping properties clean and tidy around our city. I really believe in St. Thomas. People may say, "Why are you running again?" I believe I still have a lot to offer. I want to give back to my community, to take advantage of what I've learned in the past to help guide this community going forward. This is a community not just about any one age group. Yes, we need to support the seniors and thank the seniors for the great work that they've done of giving us this amazing community. But we've also got to invest in our young people to make sure that young people in this community have the opportunity to go forward. We need to make sure that we are investing as well in our parks. Our parks are extremely important. I commend the council on the efforts that they've made of developing our parks and developing our trail system. But this can be a real showpiece for our community. And for me, a special soft spot is with Waterworks Park and how we make Waterworks Park one of the true showcases in our community. You have a lot to consider leading up to this election, but please remember me, Steve Peters. I've demonstrated to you in the past that I can serve this community and committed to this community. And I can assure you that if you elect me on October 22nd, that same vision, dedication, and passion that I demonstrated in the past, I'll give to you going forward. Thank you. Would appreciate your support on October 22nd.
Hi, my name is Joan Reimel. I'm currently a member of the St. Thomas City Council. This is a position I've been in for the four years. This was my first term and I'm very pleased to have been a part of this council. I feel we've made great strides with the city in helping move forward with our police station. We now have a social services building that we'll be building with affordable housing units over top. We've done the skate park. We also have the new soccer field complex that will be coming. We've done a lot of work in sidewalks. We've had the Dalewood Bridge being rehabilitated. So as a community, there are a lot of things that are happening and people really want to live in St. Thomas. We've had a huge increase in the residential component and this also increases our residential taxes that we receive so we can do more projects. For myself personally, I'm, I can promise you, I'm a dedicated person. I'm involved in the community. I am responsive to your issues and I do prepare for council meetings and I do discuss and bring up issues at council. And I am a strong supporter of seniors' issues and accessibility. And I also sit on the Age Friendly Community, Recycling Community, Community Improvement, Downtown Development Board, Economic Development Corporation, Heritage, Kettle Creek Conservation Authority, the Library Board, Accessibility Committee, and the Committee for Review of Grants. And committee work is a good way for people to know what's going on in the community. I also took on a personal challenge with working with both school boards last year and ensuring that the portable defibrillator units were placed in the schools. I was made aware last March that they were not available in the St. Thomas schools, but only in the London and Woodstock. So with cooperation from the school board and a great help with the past chief broadband to get me started, I did a fundraising initiative, raised $20,000 in two weeks. And by September of the last school year, those units were in place for all the schools and they're also available for anybody after hours as well in the school if you're visiting a child's project. The Heritage Conservation District is at its final stages and will be a great way to give some oversight to help preserve the heritage buildings that we have in this great city. The library committee, for example, is looking to establish a satellite library option to help the citizens of St. Thomas. Our Accessibility Committee is holding an accessibility open house in September 27th and our goal is to try and minimize the barriers for people in this community. I would very much appreciate your vote in order to continue to work for this great community. And thank you very much and please vote on October 22nd.
Hi, my name is Linda Stevenson. I'm running for St. Thomas City Council. I am previously on council for the last four years and was very excited to be there. An exciting and challenging time. We had a lot of files that needed to be dealt with and this council has been what I consider one of the best teams I've ever worked with. I'm very excited to go into this next term, should I be elected. Certainly, there are a number of issues that still are outstanding. The jobless rate, certainly, infrastructure is still well on our minds. We have a lot of projects on the go with our Ontario Works Building and certainly, our bike paths are really coming along. I've enjoyed my time. I think there's a lot still to be accomplished and I'd like to see some of those projects go forward in the future. I've been here for 30 years and I really love the city. It's got very unique history. People are passionate about what's going on. Certainly, the things I hear about are, you know, you need to create more jobs, but that comes down to making opportunities. Opportunities for employers to see the advantages of St. Thomas and certainly what we have to offer. I think there's a lot of that to be had and I think as an advocate for the city and certainly I'm working with the mayor, whoever that may be, there's an opportunity there for us. I'd like to see the municipal airport to add it on to as well. I think there's some fine opportunities for international employers probably to come into the area and use that facility as well. There's, there's opportunities, but also, I think it's also about the teamwork and the approach that I, that I bring to the table on that. Whether it's fresh debate or something that we've been talking about for a number of years, I think we've come, come a long ways with this particular council. We've had not many sort of controversies, if you will, but certainly have found ways to move projects forward and to make things count. Certainly, that's what I'm about. I'm about being a team player and doing that. I think the relationship with the county needs to be achieved in a much more effective way. There are a lot of things that certainly we need to have discussions about in partnerships and a lot of partnerships to be, to be explored, whether that be the county or whether that be London as well. We're a little bit landlocked right now, so we need those partners to come to the table. Certainly, we hear a lot about the school board as well, although that's not our responsibility. We do have some say in that. So I'm always happy, certainly with my past experience as a trustee, to bring those skills to the table as well. In closing, I'm just, I'm just excited to do this again. I think this is something that I can add to the table. I do like having the female voice there. Certainly, the councillors have been very respectful and we certainly have a lot to do. So I'm looking forward to that. Hopefully, you will vote for me on that day and I look forward to sitting at that table. Linda Stevenson, City Councillor.
Hello, my name is Mark Tinland and I am seeking a second term on St. Thomas City Council. I was born, raised in St. Thomas and followed careers in the RCMP and at two senior management positions at the Ontario Universities. I returned to St. Thomas in retirement with my wife. I'm seeking a second term because I want to see the St. Thomas city continue on a positive path and direction set by this council over the past four years. To continue growing and prospering as a welcoming, safe, and affordable and community to work, play, and retire. My priorities in this, if I were elected, are to continue investing in infrastructure, the city streets, water, sidewalks, pathways. And another example would be Waterworks Park. To improving our affordable and affordable and efficient city transit system, to encourage more housing, affordable housing units in the city, keeping property taxes rate under inflation, and to be open and transparent in spending city taxpayers' money. I have a solid record of political experience, knowledge, and education. My pledge to you is to listen, to be informed, to be accountable, to be a team leader, and to be myself. Thank you.